Good afternoon. Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Moore County Board of Education work session, regular business meeting for Monday, July 8th, to order. Before we get started, I have some comments I'd like to make. If I can. Before we start, I want to acknowledge the tremendous loss we are all feeling with the sudden passing of our friend Bruce Kenningham. While we are not expecting him today because of his planned vacation to Ireland, seeing his empty seat is heartbreaking, as we know that we will not have his passion, his insight, and his grace with us again. Of those of us here today, I am probably the one that has known him for the least amount of time. And I can honestly say however, that I know that he would want us to continue, to continue to work diligently to make our community a wonderful place to live, to continue the hard work of providing age-appropriate learning and educational opportunities in all of our schools and facilities, and to continue to champion the equitable and fair education for all students in Moore County. These are things that I am certain he would want us to continue. I am grateful to have known him, to have engaged in some important dialogue with him, and even to have disagreed with him in times. But most importantly, I am grateful to honor him by continuing our work to support all of Moore County, particularly all of our students, teachers, and staff. I want to let you all know that there will be a celebration of his life on July 18th at 5:30 PM at the Sunrise Theater for all of those that wish to honor him. I'd like to have a moment of silence for him, but before we do that, is there anything else anybody would like to say? And do not feel like you have to.
Go ahead.
Well, I just have one thing for Bruce. It's rest in peace, my friend. I will miss you.
If we could just take a quick moment of silence to remember Bruce, and to offer our thoughts to Ann and the girls while they are still in Ireland. Thank you for that privilege. Is there a motion to approve the work session agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries five zero.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll invite Mr. Eklund to come forward. Item two A.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, members of the school board. The first item I have on the agenda is, before is the approval for the Pinecrest teacher laptop refresh. As you're aware, the county has allotted $750,000 for the digital learning funds. Although we have a need for all the Area III, grade six through 12 teachers, this funding only allows us to address the most critical need, which in this case would be the Pinecrest teacher laptops. This would be a four-year lease purchase with a yearly cost of $29,124.80. Available for any questions?
It's within our digital budget.
It is within our digital budget. With the carryover funds and the committed expenses with the existing leases, this leaves a balance of, in the upcoming fiscal year, $1,155 in the digital.
But it is consistent with the sustainability plan.
It is, yes.
Okay.
To the extent that we can maintain the devices.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Eklund?
I guess I'm just wondering, I obviously agree with refreshing where we can refresh. What happens then in the timeframe to Southern Middle and West Pine?
We have devices, basically other devices in stock that we're going to be able to swap with teachers that have laptops that fail during that time period. They're still, they're using devices that are a little better condition than what Pinecrest has, so we expect them to be able to at least last another year with us swapping available equipment.
Okay, so whatever the best is, we take it out and use it.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there are some needs during the year, they can be accomplished?
We hope so.
Yeah, you hope so, okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
And Mr. Eklund will remain in place for item two B.
Yes, thank you. This is for the Managed Printer and Copier Services contract. Our contract with, between Moore County Schools and Toshiba Business Systems ended on June 30th of 2019. We have gone through an RFI process with multiple vendors that are part of the state contract for managed printing solutions. We started with multiple initial respondents, got down to two vendor finalists, and then in collaboration with a selection team and some technical experts, we selected Carolina business equipment with Kiosera equipment. This new fleet will provide several significant advantages to the district. It's going to be a full refresh of all devices at the schools. It's going to have, all Moore County Schools users will be centrally registered, so our bookkeepers won't have to manage printer codes and user codes at each device. It has follow-me printing, which lets anybody print to a central queue and retrieve their jobs anywhere securely. There's going to be no requirement of collection of copy counts. It's all completely automated. We also have a fully documented SLA for repairs and service with a four-hour response. And this also includes automated toner monitoring and ordering, so that, so they will centrally monitor supplies and order them and ship them directly to the schools. Another advantage is, even with this entire complete refresh of the fleet, the total cost with our current, our estimate based on our previous year of copy counts is slightly lower than what we spent last year on the Toshiba contract.
It's nice when we can get it lower than the year before. That's probably not usual. When will training happen for staff?
We have done training for the administrative and the bookkeeper staff at all the schools already. They've implemented some sort of demo devices to carry us over until the full deployment that would happen, upon your approval, would happen on the middle of July. And then they're going to come back and train all the staff as they come back beginning of August. We're working with the schools on what's most convenient for when the teachers come back. One of the advantages of this solution is also that it's considerably easier to use. So the training, we expect to be a lot quicker for the teachers.
That's always good to hear.
I must say that some of the features offered there with the advantages are most appealing, especially the ones like follow-me printing. There's nothing worse than needing to run off a test and getting to a copier and find out that it's jammed, and you cannot use the only one assigned to your department. And when you could walk down the hallway and use the social studies one, more or less. And to know that you'll be able to access these others and have the advantages that you have listed here can make a real difference for teachers.
Yeah, we expect it to.
Any other questions or comment about this agenda item? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Eklund.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call Kent Eklund back to the table yet again.
Get out of here.
For item two C. Kent, stay put.
Yes, this is a agreement for our Canvas Learning Management System. As provided to you, there was a memo from the state regarding the North Carolina convenience pricing on Canvas Learning Management System. They have changed, this coming year, the contract is written such that if districts do not engage in a three-year agreement with Instructure, the company that provides Canvas, they increase the yearly cost. And because this total cost would be over the threshold for board approval, I'm just bringing it to your attention that we request an approval for a total three-year agreement, which would save us $3,780 over the next three years.
You can keep coming back with things that are saving us money.
I'm trying.
I'm not familiar with the functionality of this product. Can you tell a little bit about how this performs, this Canvas?
Well, it's a learning management system that provides online learning opportunity for the students. The teachers go in and they create courses, and students can go and engage in discussions. Just some statistics, on the last year, we had 4,925 students engaged in the Canvas system, 10,042 assignments, 3,000 discussion topics. So it's being used extensively.
So it's not a software product that's installed, it's a web-based
Yes.
Online tool that the teachers are connected to?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
It's similar to products like Moodle or Edmodo.
Gotcha, okay.
It's a standard one that the states move towards, they're using it for CTE and CVPS.
Okay, thank you.
And it's also being used in a number of colleges and universities.
Okay, thank you.
And this is just another example of how difficult it is to put together a budget that actually can tell us what we have to spend. Obviously, we're saving here, but when we don't get notifications like this prior to budget time, you don't even know exactly how much to put in your budget. So fortunately, this is a good one.
Yeah, going down.
Any other questions or comments from staff?
Item two C.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Well done. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Locklear to come forward.
Ms. Dixon's unavailable today, so I'm standing in for her. Good evening, good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. Coming to you with our annual request for your approval of the federal programs and consolidate application assurances. This is something that we bring to the board on a yearly basis, as we apply for our federal funding each year, that the board approves. And includes our federal funding from Title I, II, III, and IV. So just wanted to, this is our normal process for bringing this to you for your approval each year, certainly open to any questions that I may be able to answer.
Tim, what exactly is the board approving?
They are approving our assurances that we will use the money as we put in our program application, as we download into the state in what's called the consolidated application. That's what the board is endorsing, that we will follow through with our assurances of using the federal money as it's supposed to be used.
And those are pretty prescribed and follow reporting rules and guidelines that we have to follow.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or comments? Okay, next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. Dr. Metcalf is next.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am here on behalf of the Calendar Committee with a recommendation for adoption of the 2020-21 Innovative Year-Round Calendar. We've brought this before you several times. This is a calendar that is much different than what we've used the last few years. As a result, we've put a lot of energy into bringing this to the community, both with our school-based groups, teachers, parents, students, as well as our district-level groups. In addition, we put it online between May 14th through June 14th for community input. We had 390 respondents to this survey. 75.5% were in support of this calendar. There were a number of comments, everything from some confusion over the title to wanting to ensure that both students and 10-month staff are completed by Memorial Day, more time, excuse me, more time at Thanksgiving. There was a real interest in trying to create some longer weekends in September and October during that first semester. Calendar Committee reconvened, tried to look at all of those comments to see what kind of changes could be made, and we did make some. We were able to provide some clarification to the intercessions. We did change some of the ending dates. The last day for students is May 26th, and the last day for 10-month staff would be May 28th. That is before the 31st, which is the holiday. Some suggestions were very difficult to do. Adding additional days off or long weekends in the first semester, September, October, just very difficult for us to do, it impacts the calendar in some negative ways. One of the things that the high schools in particular wanted to do, but the Calendar Committee as a whole, was to have a balanced calendar for the first semester, number of student days, and our second semester. And there just wasn't a lot of flexibility in the first semester to have some non-instructional days, or add additional non-instructional days there. Calendar Committee would like to bring this forward for adoption today. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
I think my biggest concern is on the placement of some of the workdays and/or leave days that are in here, and the request from quite a few people to insert a longer weekend somewhere in the fall, so that there might be a fall break. And I was still looking at that October 15th and wondering why it was on a Thursday and not on a Friday, realizing that's a conference day and just an early dismissal, but why could we not have placed that one on the Friday? And then, okay. And then going ahead to looking at November 3rd, which is a required teacher work day, but it's on a Tuesday, which means people have had to come back for one day, and then we're out for a work day. And I don't see as that being the most workable.
Let me answer that one for you.
That one I can answer.
Yeah, because that's election day, and we made a policy decision on presidential election days to always close.
Well, you're right.
Because the schools are being used for
And I hadn't paid attention to that.
That's okay.
For that Tuesday.
Yeah, and that's a year from, that's a year from this November, yeah.
Yes, and unfortunately, we've been able to use that election day also as a conference day, but by starting several weeks earlier
It eliminates that.
It eliminates that option for us, and that's why we wanted to do an early release day. Did put that on Thursday for a couple of reasons, and had a lot of conversation around that. Because it's a conference day, we want to encourage people to come to the conferences. Sometimes we've had issues with that when that's on a Friday, the end of the week or at the beginning of the week. So there was discussion on the team to put that toward the middle of the week, which is the Thursday, to try to protect that and encourage folks to participate in those conferences. That was one reason. The other frankly, was because it was already at the end of where the days match up in terms of the middle of that semester, the middle of that time for the conferences, the first nine weeks. And so those were the two reasons that the Counter Committee recommended that.
Okay. I guess then I'm looking at the fact that we have nice long weekends in February and March. Now, are any of those what we would call first makeup days?
Well, it does include already the bank time, so we've got 37 hours of bank time, so just over six days of bank time included, just like we've always had. If we needed to make up time, it would depend on where we would run out of that bank time, but usually it is in the second semester, and usually it would be one of those long days in February.
I just want to say, I've heard from many parents who are, and students actually, who are very excited to have the testing done before the holidays. So I think this is, this really allows our students, this is really the best calendar for students, when you think about it in that way. The other question I have from folks, which you address here, is about the intercession dates. And those are just our regular summer school, if you need to want to attend, they're not requirements. Is that correct?
That's exactly correct. So it would be during our intercession that we would be doing our STEM camps, where we would be doing our summer school, that we do our Read to Achieve, that would happen during those intercession dates. But at this point, we don't see anything additional added to that time, and they're not required days.
My only recommendation is when this is, you know, ready to put up on the web, is to have some kind of footnote or something that it really clearly identifies those as optional, or, you know, just to clarify what intercession means. Because I think, I think when we look at what our neighbors in Wake County are doing versus, and what other, you know, what I would call real year-round calendars are doing, they use those intercession dates for everybody. And this is really just optional summer school, those activities that we offer, just to be clear.
And basically, that's most of the comments that I have, is the confusion about the year-round title with this, and reflecting back on previous years that we've had with year-round school. So I think possibly that's where some of the confusion has come from.
Do we have to call it an innovative year-round?
We do need to call it an innovative year-round calendar. That allows us to work with the state to be able to approve a calendar that doesn't start within the dates. So that's, we understand there's great confusion with that, and we've worked hard to communicate that out, continue to do that, and I think your idea of a footnote is an excellent one that we can have.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Dr. Metcalf, perhaps just offer a brief explanation on what is the standard we have to meet for an intercession? How, what have we seen, in those school districts where the state has presumably allowed them to proceed with this? When they say intercession, I mean, it's not like we just slap the name and just keep doing what we've always done. What are we doing differently to meet, and what standard are we trying to meet, and what are we doing differently in this calendar that defines intercession?
We need to have set dates for the intercession that are described in the calendar, they're noted in the calendar, which is why we have them set up as different colors. And during that time, we have to provide the option of bringing students in. And so we will do that in both intercession one and intercession two, through programs that we currently have in place. So our Read to Achieve would be where we bring in third-grade students. That will happen during the first intercession, we'll meet that criteria that we're required to meet. Our summer STEM camp, where we bring our students in, we'll do that, probably both the first intercession and the second intercession, again, meeting that state standard of requiring or having students come in during the intercession. What we won't be doing is offering additional classes, no required classes, anything to that nature. It's not a year-round calendar per se that we've had in the past, where we have different students coming in at different times, full schools.
So do any days on the calendar have to be marked as vacation, as they originally were on that first calendar?
No, not.
Okay. This is exciting as a parent. I like seeing this personally. I would have liked to have an October break, but I also understand that
Should be noted that in the past, usually we were about the low 60% approval of support for our calendars.
Oh, wow.
This time, we're well over, or just over 75%. So the respondents have been much more supportive of this calendar.
And it's still the same number of instructional days.
Same number of instructional days.
So that doesn't change.
Same number of instructional hours built into the calendar, nothing changes, it's just the start date and the ending.
Well, I'm hearing from teachers that they're, they don't like giving up some of their summer next year, but they also are thrilled to be able to get testing and integrated tests done before it gets too hot, before the children start looking ahead. I mean, as soon as it hits Memorial Day, students are, they're out of there. So anything that teachers want to do, it's hard to keep them in those last, next 15 days. So they're very excited.
It's hard for the parents, too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. This time, we'll invite Dr. Alpenfels, I believe, Dr. Locklear. Yeah, I think we've got. He's kind of eager there, Dr. Alpenfels.
We're presenting first read for the changes of the policies. The majority of the policy's revision have to do with adhering to state board, not state boards, excuse me, school board policies that have come about to redo things. One that I do want to call your attention to is on page 37, number 4203 slash 7104. In the second paragraph on, three lines above that paragraph, above that paragraph, for any such employee first hired after the effective date. The committee was looking at that, and we were looking at effective date of the policy, and we were looking at effective date of hiring, and in talking with transportation and human resources, they would prefer to have this as an April-August 1 deadline-type effective date. So continue to, let's see, where is it? Teacher assistants, including procedures.
This is the third paragraph.
Yeah, third paragraph. So instead of saying just effective date of this policy, say August 1st of this policy. And the committee was in agreement with this.
Can you talk a little bit about this policy, how this policy came about?
Well, as we all know, we've had a huge shortage in trying to recruit bus drivers. And so we've talked to a number of other school districts as to how they're recruiting. In fact, Libby and Stacy and I were at a conference in, outside of Wilmington this summer, and there were buses all over Wilmington with big, huge signs saying, "Bus drivers needed to apply here." So they're following the same shortage that we are. But in talking to several other smaller school districts, one had been using it, a policy similar to this for 20 years, and another one about 10 years. And they've had little to no difficulty recruiting bus drivers by working with their teacher assistants, their custodians, and their nutrition, child nutrition assistants. And they've, they've found that people, that some extra money coming in so that people have, don't have to work a second job. This is their second job. They are finding that people get to know the children from a variety of different venues. That's also helpful with the school. They know the parents because they drive the bus routes. They can help the teachers know what's going on, and so it's a win-win situation.
We also have hope that although this wouldn't apply to anyone unless they were hired after August 1st, that retroactively, some of our current employees might decide they would like to go back and take option to this and earn a little extra money and add it to their resume as well.
Well, I know the bus driver shortage has been a real challenge for, for us over the past couple of years, so hopefully this will help increase our roles.
Yeah, and then the next couple of years, opening up four new schools, redistricting, getting everything aligned with that. We're hoping we'll need more bus drivers, too, because children will be taking buses because there'll be shorter routes, closer to schools.
Good, thank you for explaining that.
Other than that, most of the other pieces are, are general School Board Association material. Any other questions?
I have no other questions.
First reading. Thank you.
Topson, good?
No, I'm good.
And now, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, Board. I come, come to you this afternoon to, with the staff recommendation, to establish a date for a public hearing to receive comment on the superintendent's recommended multi-year student assignment plan that he will be presenting to you in September, at the September 3rd Board Meeting. As you, as the public is aware, as our community is aware, we've been, we've presented two drafts so far of a multi-year district-wide student assignment plan, and we've received, had opportunities to receive public comment and public input through that process. Dr. Grimacy is now working with the planning team to bring a recommendation to the Board in September, and we would like to recommend September 12th as a proposed day to have a public hearing to receive input on his proposed plan. And that would be at 6:00 PM on September 12th. And certainly open to any questions that you may have about this recommendation.
Do we have a location?
It would either be at Carthage Elementary or Union High School. We're still determining which site would be best.
But for now, the, the Board's role in this is to make an adjustment to your calendar. So this is nothing more than a change in your calendar to establish this date. Herefore, all the PowerPoint presentations, for the most part, a couple of them have said September 12th, but for the most part, we've said mid-September. But now that we know more about what the other expectations are for the fall, September 12th will, will be the date that we would recommend that you establish.
Are there any questions about that? I think it's good we're getting it on our calendar and making sure that it is publicly announced as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you very much, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you.
This time, I'll invite Ms. Lovelady. Come forward.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm here to present the bid awards for milk and ice cream for the 2019-2020 school year. For, we had the bid opening on May 29th in the Child Nutrition Office. There were two responders for the milk bid. The low bidder was Maola Local Dairies at $235,629. And we are recommending the award of the bid to them. That is a decrease from what we were paying for milk last year, so that was good. For ice cream, there were also two responders. And for that, Hershey Creamery won the bid after adjustments were made for pack size because different companies have different pack sizes for the ice cream items. And their low bid was $26,944.76 based on the estimates. I'm here to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. We do this frequently, so we appreciate the thoroughness of your results. Anything else?
Any questions from Ms. Lovelady?
And the savings.
Again, savings.
Thank you, Janet. This time, Madam Chair, I'll invite Mr. Barath to come forward for item renowned 2I, 2I.
And more. We'll start with this one. Good afternoon, everybody. We had put out for bids for the replacement of building automation controls at three of our schools last month. Just to remind the Board the reason we did this. West Pine Middle School, about, almost coming up almost on two years ago, through deferred maintenance and lack of funding, critically felt the building automation system, which meant we could not control heating or cooling in the building. We immediately got a contractor involved to replace it during school while it was going on. It was uncomfortable for many people during that period, but we did successfully replace the system. These three schools that I'm going to talk to about have the same situation, critically set up that they could fail without notice. And so we consider these our dire needs, and with our capital we want, that we have available, we wanted to address these, so we did not run into a similar repeat. We also set up the bids for the projects to be in three parts. Bid each school, one at a time. This is to afford the companies that were responding the opportunity that if, upon opening one bid, if they awarded it and they wanted to change their bid for the next project or they weren't awarded it and they wanted to change their bid for the next project, they had the opportunity instead of putting them all three in one carton. That enabled us to have good competitive pricing as well as availability of any of the vendors bidding to do the work. So that's the introduction for kind of the next three parts here, and I'll speak about the first, the Vast Lakeview Elementary. When the bids were open, we had a revised budget amount of about $200,000 for the project. Brady Services, Building Automation Services, and Systems Contractors. All three have performed work for Moore County Schools in the past, and have performed well, were the three bidders on this. We also had bid alternates included. One was for replacing piping valves should the budget permit it. These do not need to happen at this time. They can occur at any period. They are not in as critical need as the building syst, automation system itself at this time. Another one was to provide a workstation for the successful system since each vendor represents a different control system. So the apparent low was Systems Contractors at $164,670. We wanted to award the workstation alternate of $1,200 for them for a total of $165,870. Again, this is funded through the capital fund that we have available to us. And attached to the document is the bid summary of all three bids as well as the agreement for the services to begin. And I'm here to respond to any questions you may have.
I just have a couple of questions. Are these items all on that large packet of capital projects that we have been documenting for the past two years? Okay, so you're making your way through that as funding is allowed. And is this, this is coming out of our, you said it was the capital fund, so this is not lottery funds? This is capital?
Right, this is our capital fund that are allotted to us annually from the county commissioners.
And what is the workstation?
The workstation is a data station for setting up here centrally to house the system and the access to the cloud data.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, and so it's the same station for all three of these projects?
It will be. In this instance here, it's just for this one in this case. And when I introduce the other two projects, you'll see how they tie together to it.
Well, it's good to be ahead of the game before they actually fail.
We're trying.
Yeah.
I believe at West Pine, it was what, during parent open house or something when it was so miserably hot and.
It was later than that. It was actually one school had already begun.
Oh, that one it was. I know it was miserably hot.
Are there any questions about this one? All right, thank you.
And then the next item on the agenda is the same introduction. It's for New Century Middle School. Again, as you can see by the bid tabulation sheets, these projects were open at 15-minute intervals, affording each the opportunity to revise their bids as they saw fit to keep it competitive and open for each and every situation. Again, we had the same three bidders for this. Brady Services, Building Automation Services, and System Contractors. Same alternates were put in here. We had established a budget for this of $250,000. And since the apparent low is Systems Contractors for $229,570, we did not need to accept the workstation alternate since they were already providing that under the Vast Lakeview project. And so again, with this one, same situation with the valves. They are not in critical state and needing replaced at this time. We can replace them at any time throughout the life and operation of the building, even when it's being occupied by students. And so in this case, it is recommended to award the contract to System Contractors to the amount of $229,570, again, paid from our capital funding. Any questions on that one?
And I didn't ask this the last time, but what is the life expectancy of the valves themselves? Do you expect them to?
They vary, but you expect them to go about 20 years before you need to start monitoring them for maybe, in some cases, you have to replace some of the packing or some of the, if there's a mechanized controller to it.
Thank you. Any other questions about this one? And is the cost differential just the size of the building?
Absolutely.
Is that the difference?
Continue, Mr. Barath.
And then the last one of this package is the same for Southern Middle School. Again, same three bidders on it, same situation. Brady Building Automation and Systems Contractors, and in this case, again, System Contractors was the apparent low for $203,180, just like with the previous one. Not able to do the valves at this time, but we do not need the workstation since that was included under Vast Lakeview. And again, the difference in the price between this and the other middle school is because the number of units within the school varied. They don't have the exact same number of units, which means not the exact same number of control locations. So that accounts for the difference between those two prices. And it's recommendation for awards to Systems Contractors, the amount of $203,180 paid from the capital fund. Do you have any questions regarding that one?
Since the low bidder is the same for all three of these, will they be completing one job before progressing to the second job, to the third job? Or do they have the manpower to undertake all three of these at once? Will they be finished before school starts?
And that was a discussion we had with them at completion of this because we were concerned that any one bidder should get all three and the ability to be ready for school. They assured us that through their current staffing, what they have to attack all three projects and not necessarily use them, but start one while it's going on, move on to the next while it's going on, and move on to the third while it's going on, not waiting to complete one and move to the other, they can complete the task. And with their past performance, we felt confident in awarding all three to them.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Mr. Barath, please continue with item 2L.
Yes, this is a unique situation with the Pinehurst Elementary site. The Board of Education is actually leasing that property from the village of Pinehurst. However, Moore County Public Utilities requires an easement to access the water services that will provide water and sewer into the modular units that are being placed out there. Typically, this would be the action of the property owner, but since we have a lease agreement in place, it requires the action of both the Board of Education and the village of Pinehurst. And so in this case, there's been two separate documents prepared. One of them is for the Board of Education to execute granting Public Utilities access to the site to maintain and operate the water and sewer services, and the same is being executed by the village of Pinehurst for this. The document has been reviewed with legal counsel, and there's not been any changes identified to make to this. And it's presented for consideration for approval at this time, and I'm here to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? I have to say, I've been driving by the Pinehurst temporary school site, and it's been very exciting to see the buildings.
Come together.
Come together, and, and I've actually talked to some children who are very excited about them, too. So not mine, since they won't be there, but, you know, I think they're enjoying watching them go up, too. Will there be an opportunity for us to help with Move-In Day? Because I'm not, probably only speaking for myself, but maybe there are others here on the Board that want to help with Move-In Day whenever that is.
Absolutely. All hands will be welcome.
Yes.
To assist with that day in any manner that can be given. And so we will provide information as that moves closer upon the electrical service and the fire alarm system installation and notify the Board when that occurs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very exciting.
John, if I could, Madam Chair, permission, on item L, deed of dedication, I recall that legal counsel's advice was that that be a board action item, not a consent item. And is there a particular reason for that?
Because it involves property. Anything that involves real property, the Board of Education is to, best practice, be under a board action as opposed to consent.
Thank you. Any questions on that, Board members? Okay, Madam Chair, with your permission, may we proceed with item M, 2M? Oh, I guess that's mine.
Would you like me to introduce it, sir?
Why don't you, yeah, it's got my name on it because I, I wrote it while you were on vacation, but you've actually followed up on that, John, so would you? I'm happy to do it, but I, I was assuming you would.
That was very well written.
You'd feel comfortable with it.
This generally is a request for the Board to endorse us the opportunity to request a speed limit change on Camp Easter Road as the, in front of McDeeds Creek Elementary. As identified in the executive summary, that current speed on McDeeds, in front of McDeeds on Camp Easter Road is 55 miles per hour. That speed limit will change with the completion of the roundabout. But we want to be afforded the opportunity to make the request to DOT to further look to reduce that speed limit into what's considered a safe school speed limit environment zone, which is 35 miles per hour along the road there at the school. This would be encompassing of a distance of approximately mile from the circle up towards the east and also heading down to the intersection of Aiken and Fairway, where the current speed limit is 35 in that zone down there. The traffic that's going to be encountered out there, especially approaching the roundabout, we want to make sure the public is safe as well as the students being transported by bus or by parents or guardians in these environments. We also recognize that we have another school directly across the street with Pope John Paul II. And they, their operation of students being transported as well there. There are several options that NC DOT has afforded through this process. We also are requesting that we can make a request, requesting twice. In this, we are requesting endorsement of the support of the superintendent submitting a request to the town of Southern Pines that they approve and endorse our action that we will take with NC DOT to reduce the speed limit on Camp Easter Road at the schools to thirty-five miles per hour. That's in brief summary. There's more in there that talks about some of the situations that we face out there. This is a DOT roadway. It does not transition to Town of Southern Pines roadway until it hits Fairway in Aiken. So this request must be made to DOT, but we also want to seek support from the Town of Southern Pines for the safe action.
And that involves a letter, which has been attached to this executive summary. Board members, I, I do recommend that the board consider a motion to authorize the chair and the superintendent to sign a letter requesting Southern Pines Town Council's support for reduction in the speed limit along Camp Easter Road in the vicinity of the new McDeeds Creek Elementary School. And John, it's my understanding that it's actually the municipality that has to make the request to DOT. School boards don't request DOT to change speed limits, do they, or don't they?
We can make the request.
What is the, what is the procedure?
We can, we will initiate the request to NC DOT for speed limit reduction.
And so the whole purpose of, of, of sending this letter to the town council is what?
Is their support endorsement of the request for safety.
Okay. And then once we get that, then what?
Then we package that with an official request to NC DOT to reduce the speed limit.
So we're looking at a multi-month process here, is that correct?
I do not, in front of me have the schedule for the Town of Southern Pines meeting to have this presented to them by their mayor, but immediately following that, we would submit to DOT.
But it's reasonable to conclude, this isn't going to happen like before school opens. This will happen after we get into the school year, so we, we really do want the public to be mindful of safety between St. Joseph of the Pines and, and the two schools that are across the street from each other.
Correct.
I think our neighbors share that concern. We heard that when we were first identifying this property. And so it's with that, Madam Chair, I offer my recommendation that we get that ball rolling by starting with seeking the Southern Pines Town Council's support.
Absolutely. Is there, does DOT have a standards that they have around roundabouts that they would lower the speed limit anyway?
They do. There is a reduced speed limit there. We're going to seek that it be extended all the way up by St. Joseph of the Pines, et cetera, moving towards the east, northeast up there further to let traffic slow down as it approaches the school.
What, what is their speed limit? Thirty-five?
I, I have to look at that. I don't want to give an incorrect answer whether it's thirty-five or forty-five approaching the circle.
With the safe requirements of a roundabout going in.
It's going to be thirty-five or forty-five on the approach, Mr. Denson, I would have to get back to on the exact number.
Oh, don't worry about it. That was just the question.
You know, Lad, I've spoken with Mr. Buse, the new chief executive officer for St. Joseph of the Pine, and he was very appreciative of our initiative on this and said that he would be in communication with his board and anticipated that they certainly would look favorably on, on some sort of, anything that would enhance the safety of their residents and their families and their employees.
Those people do come flying around.
They do, they do.
I believe, I noticed signs up already that said, you know, reduction during school hours, when I drove down Camp Easter Road the other day. But that's not enough. We're, we're asking for the speed to be permanently reduced.
And my question when I saw those signs was, then what about not during school hours? Do you go by fifty-five miles an hour through the circle?
Right.
So there, I think a lot of people will agree. There's, there's a need for clarification on the part of the municipality and DOT and, and anything we can do to make our patrons safer traveling through there. I think it'll be easy. We just have to get the ball rolling. And advice that I received from the town councilman was that this was a good way to start, so we've got to go.
Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Braith.
Madam Chairman, we are significantly ahead of schedule. I don't think anybody saw this coming. With this many items, normally it's, it's a real, it's, it's real white-knuckle process to make sure that we stay on schedule. I, I would like to offer, as you begin to discuss the assignment of your items for board action and consent agenda for after closed session, that one option that's available to you, because our, even our legal counsel hasn't arrived yet, so we have to be a little mindful of that before we go into closed session. But I would offer that the superintendent's report during tonight's business meeting is an information item. And, and I would be very open if the board wanted to amend its work session agenda and move the superintendent's report up to the work session agenda. Get that one, that informational item taken care of before closed session. I, I would certainly be willing to do that if you're interested. So as you're thinking about your agenda after closed session, which is the, the, the whole point of item N, that, that's something that you might want to take consideration. I have a little bit more detail in my superintendent's report this time. Probably going to take a little bit more time than I normally do.
Are there thoughts about that?
I'd, I'd like to.
I, I, I don't, personally, I feel that, that that should be done when, when, when the regular meeting starts because of the, of the number of people going to be, all we need is somebody to say, well, you know, why'd you move it up or something?
That's fine.
I agree.
I'm open to whatever the board's preferences are. I just was trying to make best use of our time.
I appreciate that. And I will say that these items, many of the items that were here today are similar ones that we have every year around this time-
That's correct.
-as we get ready for the new school year, so. So because we can't go into closed session, is it more, at this point, do we go?
It's recess.
Do we have a recess?
You have a recess until legal counsel arrives.
And then we can go into closed session.
We need to assign, do the assignment.
Yes, let's do that first.
Yeah, you need to, you need to go through that process because Sonia will be working in between to make adjustments to the agenda to accurately reflect what your schedule will be for tonight.
Everything through L.
Well, we had decided that L needed to be on the pending action.
Uh, board action.
Board action.
Uh, we might also offer the board's consideration of item E because of the importance of the innovative year-round calendar. It has been your tradition to isolate those kinds of decisions.
Item F, are any of those policies have to be approved right now? And we have a precedence with, that we normally, we don't approve, we have a month between when the policies are-
The one on hiring a schoolboy.
Yeah, we do have to do that by August first.
Well, I, well, if we have to do that one before, I, that, we'd have to wait policy to do that because we wait thirty days generally to do it, right? That's in our policy.
We usually read it during work session and then approve it.
Yeah, the following week.
The week following week.
And some of these will help us with the, with the beginning of the, the school year.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking about is, is, is people will not get a chance to respond to, to the policies that were presented. They very seldom do, but I, I just don't want the public to think we're railroading something without them getting a chance to review it and respond. That's my only thought.
Are there any items that would need to be in place by August first other than that policy?
Dr. Alpinfels, could you come up and add some value to our discussion here?
I can't log in, sorry. I'm trying to pull up the policy about first and second reading.
Yeah.
I wasn't quick enough on the draw to get that up, but I don't think it requires thirty days.
It, it hasn't before.
Because I had, I conferred with counsel before we put the agenda together, but let me see what your policy says.
We could take a brief recess.
We could do that, and I could-
Hey, let's take a brief recess.
Why don't we take a brief recess?
Okay, at this time, and then come back and consider item N?
I think that sounds perfect.
Very good. So we do a little bit of analysis and allow board members to take a little stretch break? When do you want everybody back?
Fifteen minutes, since we have time.
Five minutes after or ten minutes after?
Uh, five minutes after works.
Okay.
And if someone can check this TV monitor up here.
All right, we'll call a recess.
Was he on off switch yet?
Okay. I call the board meeting back to order. We are deciding about our agenda for the rest of the regular session this afternoon. What is our, what is our recommendation, Dr. Brown?
Regarding item F.
Regarding item F for the policies.
We will pull out all except policy forty-two oh three.
Forty-two oh three, which is the bus driver policy.
Yes, and we will vote on that one.
Only. So the easier way to put it is policy forty-two oh three only will be acted upon under a board action.
Under consent.
The superintendent would recommend that because of the rather unique nature of what we're doing, I would suggest that we put that under a board action just to make sure the record is clear. That'll make it easier for Sonya to set it up for after closed session as well.
Okay, so our items for...
E and L would also be board action.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so E, F, and L would be board action and the rest would be under consent.
And so we did not need to take action on item M? That was just for information and...
No ma'am, that is an action item. That would be on consent.
Okay.
That's a matter of you just authorizing the chair and the superintendent to sign a letter.
Yeah, everything else will be under consent that we'll vote on earlier. All right, so E, F, and L will be under board action, everything else under consent. Do you have that, Ms. Potter? Okay. So now we'll go into another recess.
Yes, ma'am. I have notified...
Correct. It will just be one policy and that'll be clear on the, on the agenda. Correct. Now we need to go into recess until our, we can't go into closed session, yes, until our attorney arrives and I will call a recess until he gets here. Half hour.
I have notified him that we're running ahead of schedule and so should he have the opportunity to hear his voice messages as he's driving, he'll know that we're, as soon as he arrives, we can...
Yeah, he generally shows up fifteen minutes early, so he might do the same. All right, so we're in recess until then. We'll be back soon. Thank you.
I call the board meeting back to order. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, I move the board into closed session to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a1, a5 and a6 and General Statute 115c-319 to prevent the disclosure of confidential student record information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a1, GS 115c-402 and 20 USC 1232G and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a11a3.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will be back at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order for the Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
Some have.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We have first on our agenda, excuse me, I have a lot of paper here, Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Murphy.
Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Powers, the inspiration? Is the microphone not working there, Mr. Bra?
Thank you. I'm pleased to be able to share the inspiration this evening. It's an excerpt from the Minds Journal, which provides a collection of quotes, positive thoughts, and life lessons. This centers on everyone counting your blessings and being happy and thankful for what you have. Sometimes you're unsatisfied with your life, while many people in this world are dreaming of living your life. A child on a farm sees a plane fly overhead and dreams of flying, while a pilot on the plane sees a farmhouse and dreams of returning home. That's life. Enjoy yours. If wealth is a secret to happiness, then the rich should be dancing in the streets, but only poor kids do that. If power ensures security, then officials should walk unguarded, but those who live simply sleep soundly. If beauty and fame bring ideal relationships, then celebrities should have the best marriages. Live simply, walk humbly, and love genuinely, all good will come back to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Powers. For the moment of silence today, I really want to take some time to acknowledge the tremendous loss of Mr. Bruce Cunningham. He was a friend and a colleague to all of us. And while we were not expecting him today because of his vacation to Ireland, seeing his empty seat is heartbreaking to all of us and is a challenge. We were hoping to have his passion, his insight, and his grace with us for many, many years. Of those of us here today, probably the one, I am probably the one who is known in the least. I can honestly say, however, that I know that he would have wanted us to continue. He would have wanted us to continue to work diligently to make our community a wonderful place to live, to continue the hard work of providing age-appropriate learning and educational opportunity. opportunities in all of our schools and facilities, and to continue to champion equitable and fair education for all children and all students in Moore County. These are things that I am certain he would have wanted us to continue. I am grateful to have known him, to have engaged in important dialogue with him, and even to have disagreed with him at times, but most importantly, I am grateful to honor him by continuing our work to support all of Moore County and particularly all of our students, our teachers, and our staff. There will be a celebration of his life on July 18th at the Sunrise Theater at 5:30 p.m. All are welcome, who want to honor him and who want to laugh and want to remember the value that he gave to all of our community. Before we have the moment of silence, if there are any other board members who want to say something, you're welcome to do so. You do not have to, because I know it is a difficult day for us. No, it's okay. Please keep his wife, Ann, and his two children in your thoughts during our moment of silence. I will say it's been a difficult day. Thank you all for allowing me to give some remembrances to Bruce. I know we have a lot of important work to do, and we will continue to do that. Thank you for that opportunity to remember him. With that, we have our consent agenda, and actually before that, I did see Mr. Ritter walk in. Welcome, Mr. Ritter, Commissioner Ritter, thank you for coming today. Are there any other elected officials today that I did not see? No, thank you. We do have a consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda today?
Somebody.
You two were just. Motion by Ms. Carter, second by Dr. Brown, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five zero. Dr. Grimsey.
I guess that's my cue.
Superintendent's report.
It's a big, long list, but it got taken care of in a hurry.
Yeah, we did.
I'm Chairman, Members of the Board, I want to take this opportunity to report on two items of public interest. First, I'd like to report on the administration's urgent work to rectify the ACT test process failure at Pinecrest High School. As reported to the school board during its June 25th special call meeting, the Pinecrest High School administration and guidance staff continue to work with individual students and families to address possible impacts to any of their college admission and competitive scholarship goals, plans, and portfolios. The school and district administrations continue to collaborate with ACT and with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to confirm all dates and procedures for retesting and reporting of results. The school and district administrations also continue to analyze the liabilities exposed by this year's disappointing outcome and formulate policies and procedures to ensure that it never happens again. As reported by Dr. Tim Locklear on June 25th, a ten-member task force, or what he called Fire Team, has been established, and it is chaired by Dr. Mike Metcalf, Executive Officer for Academics and Student Support Services. It includes administrators and test coordinators from all three high schools, guidance counselors, district staff associated with testing and accountability, and our Director of Technology. The team is identifying areas for improved fidelity of test administration and oversight, as well as the securing of testing materials, including answer sheets. It is also evaluating the feasibility of implementing a computer-based online version of the ACT in the near future. At my direction, Dr. Metcalf will report on the task force's progress and its initial recommendations during the school board's next work session on August 5th. He'll make additional monthly reports until all matters or associated with this issue are rectified. I'll also note that the Pinecrest High School website will be used by Ms. Phillips as we determine dates for retesting or any other dates related to this process, or if, as any procedures are clarified, those will be posted on the Pinecrest High School website, so we won't necessarily wait till August 5th if we start coming up with remedies to the situation. Next, I would like to report on my decision to order a Phase Two environmental assessment of the new Aberdeen Elementary School site. Let me make it clear from the start that my decision does not suggest that I harbor any concern about the environmental quality of the Aberdeen School site. Rather, my decision to proceed with a Phase Two assessment is based solely on persistent and unsubstantiated assertions by some critics that the school board and its administration have failed to ensure that the site's groundwater and soil composition meet standards that are safe for our students and staff members. First, some background. The origin of the Aberdeen School location was based on an optimal target zone recommended by the Operations Research and Education Laboratory, or ORED, at NC State University. ORED's optimal target zone maps are used by many North Carolina school boards to determine school site locations based on existing student populations and on forecasted future enrollment growth potential. The current Aberdeen School site was located near the center of the ORED target zone. It was not only optimal in terms of accommodating forecasted growth beyond the downtown area of Aberdeen, but also for the site's access to municipal infrastructure and its potential value to efficient school bus routing. By resting about a quarter mile off of NC Route 5, it allowed for ample space for the North Carolina Department of Transportation's long-term plan to widen Route 5 to four lanes. Finally, when compared to almost all other site options for all four of the Moore County schools that are currently under construction, the Aberdeen site offered the most favorable cost per acre. The administration and the school board were well-informed of the town of Aberdeen's past dependence on manufacturing and its unfortunate environmental legacy. We also were aware of the very thorough and very expensive remedies that were employed to mitigate that legacy. To their credit, the mayor and town manager of Aberdeen were most transparent about that history and cooperated fully with the administration's preliminary site analysis. The staff's preliminary research of past analyses conducted by the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, and the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources, NC Deaner, revealed no reason to suspect that the site presented any environmental risk. Nevertheless, the final formal determination of any reasonable suspicion could only be validated by a professional independent third-party study. To that end, the administration employed the services of Building and Earth Sciences to conduct an environmental Phase One assessment in 2015. Building and Earth was engaged again in 2017 to evaluate its findings after its initial assessment was questioned by a speaker during public comment at a meeting of the Moore County Board of Commissioners. Both times, Building and Earth found no evidence among previous federal and state reports to justify the $25,000-plus dollar cost of a more detailed Phase Two analysis of the site. Since that time, no new objective evidence has been produced or presented by any source to establish any reasonable suspicion to justify such expenses. Now let me elaborate on Building and Earth and the nature of the Phase One assessment it conducted in 2015 and amended in 2017. Building and Earth is a geotechnical, environmental, and materials engineering firm that has conducted work on a variety of facility projects in a wide range of industries, including military, municipal, utilities, transportation, industrial, medical, government, and universities, as well as K-12 schools. Phase One environmental assessments are very common, and they follow standard practice in the engineering industry. Phase One protocols are outlined in ASTME 1527-13, Standard Practice for Environmental Site Assessments, which is considered a gold standard in evaluating environmental risk among science and engineering firms. It substantially supersedes other voluntary guidelines suggested by various state and federal regulatory agencies. Both Building and Earth's Phase One assessment, including an extensive review of environmental records of the property and the surrounding area, searches of historical records, including aerial photographs, fire insurance maps, USGA, topographic maps, and other sources, and a site reconnaissance of the subject property. Both the 2015 Phase One assessment and 2017 addendum concluded that there's no evidence of recognized environmental conditions in connection with the property. Some critics recently have suggested that the school administration should have ignored the Phase One assessment results and should have spent another $25,000 on a Phase Two assessment. To do so would have required Moore County schools to spend a substantial amount of money with little or no justification. Standard practice in environmental engineering is that the Phase One assessment is conducted for the purpose of determining if a Phase Two assessment is necessary or even marginally justifiable. In the case of the Aberdeen School property, there was no such evidence, so the administration chose to spend the $25,000 on other critical needs. So why spend the $25,000 for a Phase Two assessment now? In recent weeks, an online editorial inappropriately couched as investigative journalism was published by a political advocacy group that grossly misrepresented the intentions and actions of the school board and its administration related to the Aberdeen School site. The editorial included highly subjective report cards with criteria to which arbitrary letter grades were assigned by an unidentified person or organization. The so-called criteria were pulled from the EPA's Suggested School Siting Guidelines, which were entirely voluntary. The EPA even acknowledges in its own publication that the school citing process is complex and involves many considerations that extend beyond the scope of these guidelines. The EPA also acknowledges that its guidelines do not impose legally binding requirements on any school district or any government entity, and may not apply to, and as they say, is that may not apply to a particular situation based on the circumstances. We also have seen in recent weeks that those opposed to the Moore County Schools' redistricting process have used this topic as one of multiple wedges intended to erode the public's confidence and trust in the school board and its administration by sowing confusion and doubt in the minds of some in our community. This is in spite of thorough documentation, as well as significant historical records and extensive media reporting that certifies the site is safe and not a threat to public health. All documents related to the school administration's analyses and the school board's decision are available on the district website. To date, zero evidence has been presented to the district that the site might present any environmental hazard, and no formal complaint regarding the Aberdeen site has been filed with the EPA, NC Deaner, or any other formal regulatory body. However, false claims about the site and attacks on the character, intentions, and diligence of school board members and school administrators persist. Therefore, although it is entirely unnecessary and requires additional cost to the taxpayers, I have concluded that a Phase Two assessment offers the only means by which we can ensure that the public record validates that the school board has exceeded all reasonable standards in its care for the health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff members. So what will a Phase Two environmental assessment involve, and what will it provide? The Phase Two assessment will follow the rigorous protocols outlined in ASTME 1903-11, again found in standard practice for environmental site assessments. It will include soil sampling to depths of five and 10 feet, as well as the installation of a temporary well to sample the groundwater. All samples from that will be analyzed for volatile organic compounds by EPA Method 8260, for pesticides by EPA Method 8081, for semi-volatile organic compounds by EPA Method 8270, and for metals by EPA Method 6010. In addition to testing reasonable exposure pathways consisting of ingestion of, inhalation of, or contact with soils at the school site, Building and Earth will test and analyze groundwater near the southern boundary of the site, the only, albeit remotely, feasible source of groundwater contamination. I've selected Building and Earth as the contractor for this assessment, given the firm's credible reputation in the field of environmental engineering across all industries, its well-documented expertise in K-12 school citing projects, and its contextual awareness of the Aberdeen School site and the environmental history of the broader Aberdeen community. The bottom line is that Building and Earth offered the best opportunity to complete a thorough and accurate assessment and to report back to the school board in the least amount of time. The board, the firm is confident that it can report the results of its assessment during the September 3rd school board work session. There's even an outside chance that it may be able to report as early as the August 5th work session, so I've asked them to please aim for August 5th, and I hope everyone will understand if the report is more likely to be presented by September 3rd. In the very unlikely event that the Phase Two assessment identifies the presence of any compound that exceeds federal or state regulatory limits, we will take whatever steps may be necessary to mitigate any such risk. Whatever the eventual outcome, construction of the new Aberdeen School will continue, and the school district's focus will remain fixed on service to our children. The town of Aberdeen can address any persistent concerns about the environmental history or context of any other locations within the town limits. Should doubts linger among selected individuals or groups about the Aberdeen School site itself, we will welcome those who remain concerned to bring forth their own experts at their cost and/or file their complaints with the appropriate state or federal agencies. At this time, Madam Chair, I'd like to invite feedback from you and the rest of the board concerning this Phase Two assessment. The cost of the assessment will be $25,300, which is well within the superintendent's small purchasing authority. Therefore, I already have signed a contract for execution based on a proposal that Building and Earth submitted in response to my request. Copies of that proposal and our contract with Building and Earth will be posted on our website to ensure complete transparency. So welcome any questions or concerns that you have, and I'll invite Mr. Barath to be available to answer any questions as well about any details. Otherwise, that completes my report, Madam Chair, and I'll meet you soon.
Thank you for your thorough report. Any questions or comments?
I appreciate the fact that you have investigated so thoroughly and made such extensive plans on behalf of the board. It's a shame that we are forced into doing this, because we, I think, stand united that the property is of the kind of quality, location, safety, that everything is there in Aberdeen that we want, and it will truly serve our students in a very safe and habitable manner. I hope that this will then prove to folks that we would definitely not take a step forward that would harm our children in any way. I think we, you know, we've been forced really into getting them out of the older Aberdeen schools, which are much more of a health risk than anything is going to be on the new location, and appreciate the step that you have already taken to ensure that this will be proven.
Can you say one more time what were the cost of this Phase Two approach?
Twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a comment. After hearing questions from the public regarding the safety of the new Aberdeen Elementary Site, I realized that we need to do a Phase Two environmental study to satisfy their concerns. Although there was nothing in the Phase One study that indicated there was a problem with our site, it was important we do Phase Two to ensure the public and our, that our site was safe for our students. I, I agreed on June 18th with Dr. Grimsey's decision to have the Phase Two study done. On June 20th, I spoke with him personally, and we agreed that Phase Two assessment would give us the opportunity to ensure that the public record validated that school district had exceeded all reasonable standards in its care for the health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff.
I just want to echo what we've heard from Mr. Dennison and Ms. Carter. You know, I'm actually surprised by all of this attention. We have talked about this property since it was purchased in 2015, again in 2017, excessively during the bond campaign. We've talked about it with the public, we've talked about it with the county commissioners, we've talked about it here at board meetings, so I'm surprised that, you know, these questions or concerns have come up at this point. I have complete confidence in this property, and if the Phase Two study gives parents and future students that additional confidence that we feel, and if it backs it up, let's just do it, let's get it done, and move on, because we've got schools to build. We do not have to approve this for him, because he's already gone ahead and done it, and if we want to add it as an action item to endorse, we can.
Well, there's absolutely no question, I endorse the, the Phase Two.
I endorse.
I endorse.
I endorse.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take that as an endorsement.
Yes, absolutely endorsing.
Done, move on.
Thank you.
If we can't report back on the 5th, we'll be reporting back on the, on the 3rd of September.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have public address to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have 13 speakers signed up for the evening. A reminder that each speaker is limited to three minutes, and we would ask that you please pay attention to the countdown clock so that we don't have to interrupt you. You may not wield your time over to someone else. So it's three minutes for speaker. The first speaker is Carol Weldon.
Carol Weldon.
Well, Weldon, okay, I couldn't read your handwriting, I'm so sorry. I couldn't read your handwriting, I'm so sorry.
My name is Carol Wheldon, and I live in Pinehurst, and I am concerned with the urgency to extend the contract to our superintendent at this time. As his contract doesn't expire until June of 2022, I don't see the need to make the decision tonight. The school board has just lost one of its members, and you have my deepest sympathy, and I'm so sorry for your loss. But I think your first thought should be for his family and not of a superintendent who has three more years on his contract. In addition, there's been much controversy recently over the proposed actions of the school board and the school administration, and the most critical and important, at least to me, is the fact that our schools are failing. We have C schools and D schools. This is not satisfactory to me as a taxpayer who has just voted to have my taxes raised to improve the physical conditions of the schools with the school boards and the tax increase. You indicate that Dr. Grimace has earned an extension on his contract. I do not believe that he has yet. However, he has a few more years to improve the quality of our schools before we should even consider an extension, a bonus or raise.
Thank you. Next speaker, Kami David.
I emailed some of you earlier because I didn't think I could be here, because I thought my daughter had a swim meet, but it was rained out, and thank you, Mrs. Carter, for responding to my email. I'm here to, I want to start by saying that we have excellent teachers in this county. Anytime somebody comes in front of Dr. Grimace or the board, it gets twisted on social media that that person doesn't support our teachers, and I completely support the teachers. I've never had a negative experience with any teacher, teacher aide, school employee since we have lived here. I actually majored in education, decided I couldn't hack it as a teacher, and went on a career, career change. And I want to say, I work in the legal field, and I've had dealings with, uh, Mr. Cunningham, so I understand your loss. I'm here at this time to urge you to not extend Dr. Grimace's contract. Mr. Dr. Grimace currently has three years left on his current contract. Under Dr. Grimace's supervision, we have four schools that are currently D-rated, eight schools that have not met academic growth, Santos Farm Life has gone from a B-rated school to a C-rated school. Additionally, if you view our neighboring counties on, on the DPI website, Moore County has a higher percent of D-rated schools in schools not meeting academic growth than all of our neighboring counties except for Hope County. Cumberland County has four or more A-rated schools, and we have zero. I understand that Dr. Grimace and the board does not place a lot of value in, uh, school grades, however, that is the only measure of sta, measure that we currently have to measure the growth in our schools. So our schools are failing. All this information is available on the DPI website. Dr. Grimace actually encouraged me to view this website when I was inquiring about the improvement plan for the underperforming schools in our county. So with having four D-rated schools, eight schools not meeting academic growth, all of our neighboring counties except one outperforming us, and 400 missing ACT test scores, none of this indicates that Dr. Grimace has outperformed his current contract and deserves to be rewarded with an early extension. I would like to see measurable growth, academic progress, and real results before extending his contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Slusser.
Hi, um, I first wanted to say that I am tremendously sorry for your loss tonight. Um, I listened to your speech, Dr. Grimace, and actually, that was what I was going to speak about. I applaud you for going ahead with the Phase Two study. I'd emailed you guys about that. However, sir, I found a lot of what you said very insulting to me personally. Um, you're assigning motives to me that simply do not exist. I was concerned. As a mom, I was very concerned about that land. I read through the Phase One study, and I did not find that it was adequate. Um, and I actually encourage everyone in this room to read that Phase One study, and you will see exactly what it entails. Also, some very educated people, some environmentalists, have a little bit to say about this. Stephen Lester, the Science Director for the Center for Health, Environment and Justice, that has been doing this for over 40 years, they've been investigating superfund sites, his, uh, recommendation, quote, was that the parents sending their kids to the new Aberdeen Elementary School in the future be incredibly vigilant about changes to their children's health. So that is not me saying that, that is somebody who studies this. I would also like the board to address why no other land was considered. Also, were school siting guidelines ignored? Why did the board not consider placing the new Aberdeen School on the 62 acres at Southern Middle? Did we make an offer to the two landowners that have property there? Their assessed value is considerably less than we spent on acquiring the land along Highway 5. Southern Middle is closer to the existing Aberdeen Elementary and would have provided parents with the convenience of having a middle school right next to an elementary school, saving on transportation cost, and it prevents any potential exposure to pollution and pesticides. At this time, Dr. Grimace's contract does not expire until 2022. Why are we renewing his contract when citizens are still not getting answers to very valid questions? I don't see how extending Dr. Grimace's contract in any way benefits what should be the very highest priority, and that's our children.
John Zumwalt.
Thank you. I want to use some of my time to extend my sincere condolences to the board and the loss of Bruce. Very sorry. I came here tonight to talk about Dr. Bob Grimace and the fact that I don't think that you should consider for one second renewing this man's contract, or extending it, I should say. Even if he were doing a remarkably wonderful job, which of course, I think you know I don't believe he is, and by the way, I've never done anything anonymously or refused to sign anything, sure you weren't talking about me. Your speech about the, uh, school was insulting, as Sarah said. If you're so sure, if you're so certain that that school is safe, why didn't one of you, even one of you, why didn't anyone ever say it is, without a shadow of a doubt, safe? Why do we use words like maybe, might be, probably? We're talking about elementary school kids here, and if you're so certain you don't need a Phase Two study, why have one? Because I'm a loudmouth? Is that why you would do it? Twenty-five thousand dollars? Hmm, that's 5,000 less than the ACT scores were going to cost us. That's nothing. You should have done that already, and as far as why we didn't speak up before when that land was being purchased, I was at one of those meetings, the one where Mr. Barath presented a very good PowerPoint. I saw the whole thing, I loved it. Didn't say one word, let's go back and look at the video together, didn't even mention anything about a pesticide dump, found that completely by accident, and the EPA and all those studies that you point to do not clear that land for ch, children going to school there. Now, it's a long time before your contract is up, sir. We'll have another school board election, and maybe every one of you will be on that board, I don't know. But at the very least, have the courtesy to allow that new board to be the ones that make the decision on whether or not to keep this man. There are a lot of us who are not happy, and, and let me end by saying this. I've made a lot of accusations, a lot. I could lick, make a list, you know what they are, and I have never made baseless, foundless, rumor-filled insinuations, and I'll tell you something else I'm sick and tired of. I want you to go back and listen to every radio broadcast I've ever had like that's going to happen. I do not insult this board. I accuse you of being a rubber stamp for him, but I do not level accusations at you of, of any kind of illegal activity or anything else, and I'm tired of hearing that I do. So I urge you, please, there's no need to renew his contract tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Mason.
I too give my condolences for Bruce and his family. I wish I could have had a good, long contract. I've never worked under a contract more than 12 or 24 months long, because in the church business, they don't want to commit themselves that far ahead, not knowing what's ahead. And so I would agree with John's assessment that to make an appointment now is going to fog the atmosphere of integrity, of what's going on, well, why now, what's under the board, um, and my business is preaching integrity, preaching honesty and righteousness, and the image of honesty and righteousness and integrity is as important as the facts. And I'm afraid if you jump in and renew a contract that the next school board would likely have jurisdiction over, um, hopefully his job will continue, he'll do a good job, and they will appoint him again. But there's a lot of distance between now and the next two or three years, so I would speak against renewing a contract this far out with an imminent school board election ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee Park.
Thank you for giving me a little bit of time. My name is Adele Park. Most people know me as Dee. A lot of people call me Grammy Dee. I've been around for a lot of years, and in the 70s, which a few of you might not even know about, I was on a school board in Montpelier, Vermont, and never became the chairman, I was only the vice chair, because the chairman wanted that position for life, and he darn near made it. Um, my point, when I heard that Dr. Grimace, uh, it was being considered that perhaps three years out into the future was not enough, and that now it would be a good idea tonight for some reason, I don't know what that is, for that contract to be extended yet another year. I learned it at about 3:30 this morning when my cat woke me up for her early morning meal, and I said, wait a minute, I'm reading, I'm reading, and then I was writing. I was writing a note to people who I thought might be concerned enough to be here tonight, and thank you, thank you, God, and thank you, people, for coming. I appreciate that. I have a minute and 38 seconds to say a few things. Some of these things, um, are from my own experience. When I was on a school board, we had goals and objectives for a superintendent. They were clear, they were spelled out, and guess what? People of my county, Washington County, Vermont, knew what they were, and the superintendent, Alan Weiss, was a marvelous superintendent. How do I know that? Because of the evaluation results. He was an exceptional person as witness the achievements that were measurable and observable. Speaking of measurable and, and observable, I thank God that I have no kids in this school system with ACT test results missing. Heaven forbid. There is much work to be done. You're doing, um, what I assume are good jobs on the three schools, maybe the fourth one will come into being as well. This is not a time for you to be out there on a diving board, high above your taxpaying public, saying, "Well, whatever you say, we think Dr. Grimace deserves yet another year." Really? I don't think so. Let's get the proof. Goals and objectives, and let's ask for those people in the public to come forward who have something to offer.
Thank you. Charlie Thine.
My name is Charlie Thine, I'm from Pinehurst. I've never, um, spoken to the board before or even written you an email, um, but I am very concerned about the urgency to get this contract extended, and I really would love to know the reason why. I haven't seen anything why we should do this. It's got till 2022, we've got a lot of work to do here, and I think more time should be spent on that and the failures of our, of our school system. The report on the Aberdeen location, I think, is, I'd be really concerned. I, I don't think pesticides are good for anybody, especially young children. So I would really urge you to, please, let's, we've got three years, come on, let's see if we can improve some things first, and then I'd be all for it. I'd give you my vote.
Thank you. Ken Benway.
Good evening, and let me extend my, uh, my sorrow with the loss of your board member. My name is Ken Benway, uh, from Whispering Pines. I'm a property owner who has become increasingly wary of the workings of the Moore County Public Schools apparatus, especially with respect to its opaque decision-making processes, and especially so given substantive revelations about irregularities in conduct of its contracting processes. A reasonable Moore County taxpayer would not agree to considering any extension of current personnel contracts within the offices of the superintendent of schools until an official investigation has been conducted and all involved parties have been cleared of illegal acts or professional incompetency. I urge you to withhold decision on any contract extensions until the import, these important issues have been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Parks.
My name is Bill Park, I'm not related to Dee. Okay, to make it very brief, for the last couple of days, on the radio, in newspaper, on the street, I've heard a little comments about Dr. Grimsley and so forth. I don't have enough experience to say whether he deserves a contract, he don't deserve a contract. What's going on right now with the location of the school and with costs and so forth, I believe now is not the time to bring this up on the table. Let's take some time to analyze it, get some other things going. It's like, right now, you have a lot of people in this community who are upset. It's like waving that old red flag in front of a bull. Put the red flag away. Take the contract off the table. Wait a while, back and talk us when it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hensley, I believe it is, H-E-N-S-O-Y.
Hello.
Hi, dear.
See if I can get through this, I've got a couple, uh, left handed, I'm a retired Marine, so we'll see if I can write what I, uh, wrote down. First thing, I stand here as a resident of Pinehurst, uh, I have two children in the Moore County school system, uh, my companies are a major employer in the Sand Hills area, uh, and in the last couple of years, I've donated over a quarter of a million dollars of my own personal money to, uh, education in the Sand Hills, and I stand here to oppose the extension of Grimsley's, uh, contract. Why do I, why do I feel this way? Because if you, if you look at the record, some of which he articulated himself tonight, it's a record of failure, and my 20 years in the Marine Corps, we do not reinforce failure, we reinforce success, and you abandon failure. So let's look at this. 400 lost SAT scores, those are kids who anguished and suffered and prepared for those tests that, they didn't lose them once, they lost them twice. And then, from my, my reading of it, it took four or five months for people to come clean, they kept getting excuses and excuses from the bureaucracy. That's a failure. Other people have documented the low-rated schools. Really? Cumberland County, Fayetteville, has more higher-rated schools than Moore County? That's a failure. Privacy violations. When the redistricting happened, the Moore County school system shared private information, some of which, well, it doesn't matter, it's a violation of the law, but some of that information of Special Operation Forces and their children- of special operation forces and their children, who we just gave out their home addresses and names. Failure, Aberdeen Elementary, I don't even know where to start there. They took the crappiest site you could imagine, literally on the other side of railroad tracks, and they're sending the economically disadvantaged and the minority kids to that school while my neighbors are getting the shiny new school up on Morganton Road. There's credible allegations of contracting irregularities. I hear this stuff about a architectural firm, credible accusations of cronyism, violation of the North Carolina Open Records Act. What the Moore County school system has set themselves up for is criminal investigations and civil lawsuits. And those are coming. For me and a lot of other people, this is my line in the sand. There's no, other people have documented, there's no reason to extend his contract three years early. I see all this marketing for Moore County schools and all. If you guys, you guys can do what you want. You approve his contract, I'm going to take the money that I would otherwise earmark for education.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Your time is up. If you have additional comments you'd like to send, or paperwork you'd like to turn in, Ms. Potter over here will take it from you and get it to all of us.
I'll finish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Russ Van Sant.
Hello, my friends, neighbors. Russ Van Sant, 744 Burlwood, Southern Pines. I'm here to look at a little more of a big picture, but this is the public announcement for everybody in this community in Moore County. The government is a necessary evil. Since it isn't evil, government should only be what is required to accomplish its assigned task in its assigned jurisdiction. The founders formed the country with a government run by the people with elective representatives. You are elective public servants. I'm one of the people. These are the people. People have not done a very good job being involved in running the country and running the governments, partly because other people have not told us what's going on. Because of the internet, we have an, we're learning that we have an excessive government, which is out of control and very corrupt. There are no checks to control governments such as the people and the business, my career was in the business world. The Moore County Board of Education is a corporation. All governments, corporations, federal government, District of Columbia is a corporation. This county is a corporation. You people have a Dun &amp; Bradstreet number. That's not a government. That's business. It's corporation. That's a de facto government. We've had de facto government from 1871 to 1873 at the national level, and then the states and the counties and the municipalities have become corporations since then. We used to have a de jour government before the Civil War. We need to get back to that. There is a national movement to return our federal, state, and county township municipal governments to de jour. I'm working with people in Florida, and Texas, California, Idaho, all over, Michigan. Michigan's already done it. The only state in the country that has done it so far. We're using Michigan's, what they did 11 years ago, as a model. Hopefully, we'll have all of this done by the time you need to redo or add a contract and design a contract. It's not easy, it's complex, it's 50 states, but I think we're going to do it because Donald Trump is with us, working with us. He knows about this kind of stuff, his people, the people working around him. So I ask, do not vote in the contract until our government is brought under control.
Thank you. Miriam Chu.
First, I would like to say I deeply regret and sorrowful for the loss of Bruce Cunningham, who we missed. I would like to thank Ed Dennison for the conversation that we had on the phone this morning. It was very enlightening. And something that he brought to my attention is that the contract extension of the superintendent is something that apparently is done as a matter of standard operating procedure on an almost annual basis. And that Mr. Dennison brought to my attention that he's been on the board for 10 years and could not recall of it ever having not been done. The superintendent we had here before, Dr. Grimacy, Dr. Aaron Spence, I heard repeatedly what a fine man he was, what an excellent superintendent he was. But after talking with Mr. Dennison this morning, I went back and I looked at the school reports from 2014 and 2015, which would have been about the time that Dr. Grimacy arrived. And these failing schools that we have now, the four D schools, the three with recurring low performance, and the eight that did not meet the growth expectations. At that time, in 2014, these were all low-performing schools then. So Dr. Aaron Spence, during the time he was here, his contract was renewed as a matter of standard operating procedure to show the approval of the board year after year after year. And he left Dr. Grimacy with these failing schools. Now, Dr. Grimacy has been here, if I calculate correctly, approximately five years. These are still failing schools. This is becoming social promotion of a superintendent, and this is rewarding failure. And we can continue, from now until the end of time, to extend contracts just as a matter of standard operating procedure to show approval of less than stellar behavior. And I'm asking you, what are your standards? How do you show improvement? Dr. Aaron Spence was a marvelous superintendent who left Dr. Grimacy with failing schools. Dr. Ed Dennison, pardon me, Mr. Dennison, has been on this board for 10 years, and they have always renewed the contract. When will we say enough is enough? Thank you.
Thank you. David Hensley. David Hensley. All right. Well, your name got spelled differently on the two lines. All right, so that ends our public address. Thank you to all who have spoken this evening.
We have a, we have a break on the agenda, but do we just want to continue? Board members? Okay. If you need to get up and leave, feel free. We have a few items on board action. Item A, the adoption of the 2020-2021 Innovative Year-Round Calendar.
Madam Chair, you'll recall that Dr. Metcalf made a presentation on this during pending action today. He's back to answer any final question the board has. The superintendent recommends that the school board consider a motion to approve the 2020-2021 school calendar.
Are there any further questions or comments for Dr. Metcalf?
I'd just like to say I think that it is going to be extremely beneficial to our students on the high school level. Both students and staff will benefit from being able to administer exams prior to the Christmas break, and that should alleviate a lot of pressure that our students feel over the holidays. I also had the opportunity to speak with middle school principals before the end of school, and they were most enthusiastic that the majority of teachers teach to a break at Christmas anyway, and this enables them to actually finish up units of study, to complete chapters of work, and that they, they think that it would be very beneficial in that case as well. So it's delightful to know that there is a possibility that we could offer this innovative schedule to people, and hopefully they will understand that the term year round can be used in many different ways.
And that's what I was going to say. Even though you explained it to us earlier, would you reiterate some of that information as to why it's titled as such? For clarification for the public, please.
Absolutely. It is titled the Innovative Year-Round Calendar. In order to be able to do some things that are a little bit different than our traditional calendar, we need to be able to call it a year-round calendar. We will be offering two intercessions during the summer. Those intercessions are noted in the document on the calendar by different colors, those two intercessions, but we will still be doing our traditional summer activities. We will have our STEM camp, which will be taking place during our intercessions. We will have our Read to Achieve program for third graders. That will happen during those intercessions, too. You'll notice the intercessions in gray and brown in June and July, but that is not traditional school during that time.
So the gray and the brown are really vacation?
Vacation times.
Those are vacation times for most students, but they're opportunities for students to be involved in some of the programs that we offer here as well.
If they so choose.
If they so choose.
And again, we're following a model that has been employed in other school districts that, to date, has not been challenged by the state.
Has not been challenged by the state to date. It's an exciting model. Again, it aligns with the community college, which I think is of great advantage. We have so many students at the high school level who are now taking classes at the community college. To be able to align those calendars with the semester ending before the winter break and then a second semester after the break is over really is beneficial to them.
I understand this will be of great benefit to our many military families as well, and the, the summer months when they are restationed.
Absolutely. It should be noted, this, this has been out for public comment for a month, and over 75% of those who responded, responded with tremendous support.
And that was on the online survey?
That was on the online survey.
Well, and I want to thank the calendar committee for considering all of those comments and making the adjustments as they could based on some of the regulations that we have to stay within, that the state gives us, but giving us a calendar that it's going to be beneficial to parents and students alike. All right.
Let's point out, this is not for the coming year. This is a year away.
2020.
Correct. Right, do I hear?
And the current calendar for 1920 is posted on our website, correct?
It is posted on our website and is traditional.
All right, so this is for year after next.
2021, yes.
All right, any motion?
I move we adopt the calendar for the Innovative Year-Round program as presented.
I second.
Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Dr. Metcalf.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. Madam Chair, with your permission?
Yes.
Mr. Barath.
The deed for dedication.
Yeah, Mr. Barath, if you'll come forward, please, to the podium. You'll recall that Mr. Barath briefed the board on deed for dedication for water and sewer services to the temporary Pinehurst Elementary School during your work session this afternoon. He's available to answer any questions. As he comes forward, the superintendent recommends that the board consider a motion to approve the deed of dedication for water and sewer service to the temporary Pinehurst Elementary School.
I know, it was just an hour ago.
Yeah, there's no, there's no presentation, just if there are any questions from the board.
No change. Any questions? All right. Is there a motion on the table?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Barath. All right, the last item is the superintendent's contract. Are there any comments you would like to give, Mr. Rainey, introducing the contract amendment?
This item was prepared at the direction of the board. Madam Chair, as you recall, after extensive review of Dr. Grimacy's performance evaluation and closed session discussion, the contract extends Dr. Grimacy's contract for one year, makes no other changes to his employment contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the table to approve his contract?
I so move. Second.
Any discussion or comments?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I know what Ms. Chu, she said earlier, but what she neglected to tell you is that standard operating procedure when the superintendent meets the expectations of the board. And I also mentioned that I know several superintendents who did not get their contract extended and eventually ended up not being on board, and that's both in North Carolina and in Michigan. So it's not standard, it's only standard operating procedure if the superintendent meets our expectations. Thank you.
I have some comments I'd like to share. There are people in our audience today who have asked why we would want to extend the contract of Dr. Bob Grimacy. I think the better question today is, why not? Why not extend the contract, excuse me, why not extend the contract of a man who has long-range vision? Why not extend the contract of a superintendent who truly strives to do what is best to help the greatest number of children? Why not give this vote of confidence to Dr. Grimacy so he will continue at the helm of one of the finest public school systems in the state of North Carolina? Some might ask just what the superintendent has done to earn this vote of confidence. Very quickly, we might point out the desperately needed school construction underway, from a new gym and classrooms at North Moore, to the four new elementary schools about to come online in Southern Moore. This progress is visible to all, so it really doesn't need additional comment. What the public might not see are the amazing programs and people working behind the scenes in our Moore County schools. Programs and people performing under the direction of Dr. Grimacy and who ensure the success of our children. Take a moment to look at the new BIT team now performing within our schools. A BIT, B-H-I-T, or Behavioral Health Intervention Team, was a goal of Dr. Grimacy's from his arrival here. In a period where suicide, drug usage, and homelessness are major issues for our children, the BIT team steps in to stop self-harm before it can happen. A team of psychologists, counselors, and therapists are now immediately available to provide support for troubled children, and the beginning numbers of students helped already show that this team, a team envisioned by Dr. Grimacy, is saving lives. Or pause for a moment to look at the growing number of special needs students within our system, a number that might come as a surprise to some of you. For the past year, the Moore County schools have served the needs of almost 1,700 special needs students. These are children with hearing issues, speech impairments, mobility restrictions, and a myriad of other disabilities. This number equals 12.975% of our student population, a number that exceeds the state's maximum dollar allocation of 12.75%. Our programs still provide exceptional services, yet are forced to operate at a deficit that the state allows and approves. Through Dr. Grimacy's leadership, however, our exceptional children are given equitable status within our schools and provided the care that each needs. Or if you have more time and you really want to know what's going on, volunteer within our schools and see firsthand the positive outcomes within our classrooms. And instead of complaining, do your part to understand our children, our teachers, and our support staff. Dr. Grimacy visits every school within our system on a regular basis, and unlike his predecessors, he doesn't just parade through and wave at the cute kids. Dr. Bob, as the children call him, is getting acquainted with your children, reading books to our youngsters, or assessing our high schoolers to be sure that they get the courses they need. He truly cares about each and every child who enters a classroom, as well as every adult who deals with them. There is much misinformation floated on social media these days, and because of this, people outside of our schools do not always have the opportunity to understand the accomplishments or to see the good work currently being done. Appropriate programs are underway to improve test scores. Very thorough research is being done to facilitate redistricting. And each and every one of us on this board is working with Dr. Grimacy to do what is best for all the children of Moore County. Will you always agree with us? With all the, without all the facts, it's unlikely. However, the one thing you should agree on is that we have an accomplished and capable leader in Dr. Bob Grimacy, and he does deserve our support. Thank you.
I, too, have a few comments. One of the things I want to remind people, and I'm the data person, and I will always bring out data, and I think it really means something when it, when, when we're talking about what this school system is and what it is that we, we accomplished. I do want to talk about the fact that we have 12,700 students. We have 1,600 staff, teachers, and support staff. We have 23 schools, and I looked up, we have over 100 different buildings, not including our learning cottages, or otherwise known as mobile units. We actually have 90 mobile units. We have over 2 million square feet of facilities, over 841 acres of land. So when we talk about Dr. Grimacy and what he is responsible for, those are just the basic numbers of what he is doing each day and maintaining in terms of our school facilities and our students and our staff. But I do also want to talk about student achievement. Some will only look to standardized test scores to look at student achievement, and that is valid for certain cases. But I also think it's limiting and gives us a limited lens on how our students are doing. This year, we graduated 1,016 students. 546 of those students received a total of 2,000 college credits, saving their parents' valuable funding and time to go on into further education. Our graduates earned over $25 million in college scholarships. We had 19 AP scholars, that's 10% of the class. Our students earned 3,600 Career and Technical Education credentials, and 245 of our students received a silver or better on their workday assessment. We had four students earn both their associate's degree and their high school diploma at the same time. awards. We have state first-place winners in Future Business Leaders of America for Parliamentary Procedures, Skills USA first-place winners in US, in auto service and digital animation. We have veterinary science majors and state winners, state placement in HOSA and DECA competitions, as well as Speech and Debate and Odyssey of the Mind state winners, national and international competitors. Not to mention our athletic achievements. We have way too many to repeat at this point, but our football, soccer, track and field, and bowling teams are all accomplished at the state level. And finally, as a parent myself, I appreciate Dr. Grimacy's intentions and focus on student health and safety, much of which Ms. Carter has talked about. But under his leadership this year, Moore County Schools has increased physical safety at all of our schools. We worked to receive a grant to create a Behavioral Health Intervention Team to support students in crisis. We have hired nurses and SROs over the past several years to work towards increasing our school-level supports, and we have prioritized getting to know students' social emotional needs through surveys and then action items from those surveys. None of this is possible without a superintendent overseeing the hiring, training, and retention of engaging and inspiring staff to lead, guide, and inspire our students through their kindergarten through 12 years. While we can boast our very own North Carolina Teacher of the Year, I contend that all of our teachers and staff are equally committed to student success and achievement for each of our students, and that comes from the very, very top. So while I know that facilities, student assignment, the ACT scores, and budget have taken center stage in the public over the past weeks and year, I am supporting his contract extension to acknowledge Dr. Grimacy's diligence and his laser focus on these other critical matters that I believe are imperative to our students' abilities to succeed in school and beyond, and have allowed Moore County School students and staff to shine here at home, statewide, and nationally. Are there any other comments?
I, I would like to make a few, Madam Chair, and some of my comments have already been shared, but I would just like to go over some of the things that, that I had written. While we know that the superintendent's goals continue to be a work in progress, we can acknowledge some of the major goals that have been completed, which include, but are not limited to, timely completion of our new McDeeds Creek School, which will be open this August and open within budget. We also can acknowledge the information and that we've been provided in completion of our school-based emergency preparedness and crisis response plans, and that it also included training. As you remember, we were given lots of updates with regard to our emergency preparedness. We expanded and refined the district-wide focus to build safe, supportive, and engaging school cultures for our students and for our staff. Follow-up was done to expand our work on partnering our, our teachers with agencies to support mental health. As you know, I'm, I'm in healthcare, so students with mental health needs is, is just dear to me, and us partnering and providing assistance and support for that much-needed area was done, and our students really are benefiting from that. There was notable expansion and refinement of professional learning communities that was completed to ensure fidelity of our teacher engagement with the PLCs. And also, progress was made and completed to accomplish and align our Moore County school curriculum, so that we can begin to teach with the mandates of the state to improve the standards that are set in place by the state. So we, we can recognize that some of the goals that have been completed and checked off, and we know that we will have more goals as, as we go forward, as well as, as some of what you have stated with our other schools that are up and going, that will be completed within the next year, two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing. I spent 45 years in education prior to retiring, 20 of them in public schools. I can't tell you the name of one of the superintendents in the 20 years of public schools that I worked with. Our teachers and our students can. That says a lot right there.
There is a motion and a second on the table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries 5-0. That brings, that brings the end of the regular meeting. Are there any board member comments?
I have one. I realize that the county has approved the budget for this year. However, I want to remind the public that we requested the money for classified staff, improvement for our technical infrastructure, and to provide for our students with good teachers, a safe and healthy environment, secure learning environment. However, our legislatures and commissioners have chosen to limit what we asked for. Yes, we choose how we want to spend the money, but over the, over the time, state legislatures have mandated certain areas for school districts to follow. They have chosen to tell us how they want us to spend the money, and, but they don't allocate enough money. So we request, have to request local funds. I've watched for the past 18 years as building updates were ignored, salary raises given at a minimal amount, and classified staff with little to no raises or incentives to continue in their jobs, and students have limiting access to dependable technical infrastructure. This board has tried and will continue to work toward the betterment of our students in schools, with or without our asking of money. But I truly dislike, and maybe even hate, to ask for money, but we don't have any other resource to generate that revenue, so we must depend on our legislatures and commissioners.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Are there any other comments from board members?
I don't have any.
No, is there a motion?
Shall I, I move that the meeting be adjourned?
You may. You, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.